Getting dogs sold?
Yeah, slowly. Two poodles and an Aussie doodle.
I haven't advertised ours yet.
No.
Need to get that done.
What do you sell in the Aussie doodle war?
It's not my business, I would hate to say. But I can hook you up with a call.
No, I don't want it. I'm just curious what they're going for.
Well.
Like the litter, you know, because man, I just, I wouldn't want to tell you what I paid for my golden doodle.
Right now, right now, right now, nobody has any discretionary.
Yeah. Yeah, I can only imagine.
Very, very tough.
I flew mine in from Utah.
I drove to Arkansas to get one.
Yeah.
It doesn't, it just doesn't bark. It's great, great home dog there.
There he is.
He does. I have to see him. Cody is on the back here.
Cody, do you want to call it to order and then we elect, sir? What do you want to do?
It doesn't matter, whatever you would like today.
Well, just go ahead and call it to order and then we can elect.
Yep, okay. You will make your head near that now. Are you all ready?
Yeah.
Did you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. All right, it's 5:00 PM and I'll call this meeting to order.
I'd like to make a motion that we elect Jason Barr as presiding officer for this evening.
We'll second that.
Second.
You add a motion and a second, Cody.
Okay, all right. It's been moved and seconded to make Jason Barr the presiding officer of tonight's meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Jason, you now have the floor.
All righty, thank you. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance. Mr. Chapman will lead us, please.
Yes, sir. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Let's see, Lisa, do we have any delegations? All right, no delegations this evening. So we will move on to the recognition of students and staff. We got some reps from the 4H Horticulture team here. Please come forward. No, don't be shy. Come on.
Do you want to just tell us a little bit about what you did and what happened? You've been elected.
So for the state competition, it was held at the state fair this year. So that was a different experience and we got to walk around the state fair as we did multiple of our different competitions we were in. And it was fun. We got to know a few of the other teams and then when we won first, we got super excited because it meant, um, two of us got to go, boy, oh, wait, no, you didn't get to win. I got to go back to nationals for a second time. But that means that two of us had won a first place in states a second time as well. This is the second time that we had had a first place in state horticulture team while I'm young enough to remember. But like, we're trying to get it back. And so when we went to nationals, I ran for a national position and I am now the southeastern director, which means I got to like message all these states and like email people and be like, hey, do horticulture. And try and get more people actively involved again. And it's going to be exciting. I can't wait to see where it goes from there.
Talk about your competition, panel.
Um, so what I did on the national level is I submitted pictures and all three of mine placed and one got national recognition. And it was. It was a picture of an orchid, a black and white picture. And you asked what horticulture was. It's about like plants, so judging plants and knowing plants and seeds, basically everything to do with that.
Very nice. Thank you. I was there.
This was our first year of having a joint county team, Calhoun and Gilmer. We didn't have a third person for Gilmer County. So Zenis Wool from Calhoun gladly stepped up and saved us there so we could participate and compete. We're very happy to have that joint team and we're hoping that future teams will be able to pull some more kids from both counties in.
Great.
All right.
It's an awesome accomplishment. I'm proud of you all.
Thank you. Just a side note, there's a 4H open house Thursday night at the elementary school. Any student ages five through 21 can come in and join. And that's just an open house to get a membership up.
What day was that?
Thursday.
Thursday.
Was it the seventeenth?
Seventeenth.
The seventeenth. Starts at five, starts at five.
Thank you for that information. All right. Uh, let's see, we got some good news from literacy fair winners. This is my favorite part of the meeting.
Okay, I am standing in for Mrs. Sherri West this evening. She was our literacy fair coordinator this year. She's also over the after-school programs. That's currently where she's at. But we do have four of the five first-place winners in Gilmer for their literacy fair projects. And these projects had to include many things and creativity and writing and quality and their thoroughness was judged heavily. So at this time, I will call and I just put them in order as they came in this evening. We have first-place winner, Jacob Campbell. Hunter Workman. Kendall Frazier. And McKenna Pratt. So, once these guys competed at the elementary level here at the county, they did go to the regional. It was held at the Waco. On November 4th, Hunter placed third place in the region. McKenna placed second. Jacob placed first and Kendall placed first in the regionals at Waco. These guys will be asked to speak tomorrow at the Gilmer County Retired Teachers or School Employees Luncheon and present their projects. And the other projects that was completed at the literacy fair has been on display at the Gilmer County Library. Guys, congratulations. And we'll step out here to the right.
What age group do we have here? What, what age group? What are the age groups?
I am unsure of the age groups, actually. That was not on my list.
What, what grade are you in?
What grade, Hunter?
I am second.
You're second? Hunter?
Third.
Fourth.
All right. Good job, guys.
All right. All right, I believe that's all for recognition of students and staff. Yep. All right, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Do we want to take all three of these in one shot or do we want to break them up?
Uh, I say we take them all in one shot.
Okay. Uh, I'll entertain a motion to accept the October 20th, October 24th, and October 27th Board of Education meetings as presented.
So move.
Do we have a second? Second. We have a move in a second. Do we have any discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
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 So move. All right, on to the treasures report. Scheduled checks to be written. Mr. Chesser? Yes, sir.
Good evening. Uh, tonight, I do have on the agenda, there was scheduled checks to be written and a monthly financial report. I am continuously and have been working since the last meeting with WVDE. The issue that we have found, there are some issues within the Zoom reporting platform. I have communicated this with the superintendent. We are trying to, WVDE is having me try a couple of things. I'm going to reclose a month tonight and see if, if, if something is just stuck in, in that processing to see if that changes things and try to rerun a Zoom report again. He has asked me to pursue other options because he informed me today that some of the reports that he's used to running through the Zoom platform are not functional as well. So I am pursuing other options within Weavis of just running a manual report and not a digitally created report. The only issue that I'm running into is where that Zoom monthly financial report is very summarized, very concise, even though it's 15 pages. The other reports that I've been able to find, one of them was 208 pages and the other one was 137 pages. So we are, we are in a troubleshooting mode. Hopefully, if I reclose the month and it, it does what it needs to do, hopefully that will fix it. Maybe it was a glitch, maybe it was stuck. But on the monthly financial report, that is what I have to report tonight. Are there any questions on the schedule of checks to be written?
Make a motion to approve the monthly schedule of checks to be written.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chesser. All right, on to new business. Let's see, approval of policy 1010, formulation of policy. We all had a chance to read the policy.
Is, is this putting it on review or it's been on review and we're approving?
This is the approval. This is the approval.
So I make a motion to approve policy 1010.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All, uh, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, approval of policy 1040, notice of nondiscrimination. If we had a chance to read through this?
Yes.
Do we have any questions?
I think all we added was a contact person on this one.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve policy 1040, notice of nondiscrimination.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
No, sir.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Nice habit. Motion passes. Uh, let's place on review, policy number 2001, instructional materials.
I make a motion that we place on review, policy 2001, instructional materials.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Let's see, this, we have a educational leave request, Gilmer County Elementary School, Brooklyn, what's the last name?
Ames.
Ames?
Jones.
Jones, okay. I was bouncing between those. Okay, Brooklyn Jones. Uh, let's see.
I think it's all one family.
What's that?
I think they're all together if you want to look at it.
Oh, okay. One in the high school too?
Yeah, the Tessa, Macy, and Emma, as well as Brooklyn. Make a motion that we approve the educational leave request for the four students.
Second.
Motion second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, let's see. Purchase of a new bus. Approval of a 77 passenger for, looks like $117,082.
I make a motion that we approve the, the purchase of this bus.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And professional leave. Uh, let's see, is this Danny Stewart?
Uh, yeah.
Okay. Uh, professional leave request to Chattanooga, Tennessee. Southern Early Childhood Association Conference.
Bring back information, activities to share.
Motion?
I have a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right.
I didn't, I, I didn't make a nay on that. Just want to keep the record. I was just thinking in my head, but yeah.
Oh, my gosh.
Election in the A's and the A's.
We have to start the whole meeting over now.
Not a no.
Uh, okay, old unfinished business. Uh, county purchases over $5,000.
So.
I'd like to just table that until we get back and have a chance to actually, we've been going, that was put on.
We have to postpone then.
Yeah, we'll postpone then. Yes.
Okay.
Because I think Dr. Many was going to.
We haven't had a chance yet to talk. Yeah, we haven't had a chance to talk.
Recommend that we follow the state.
Okay.
So just wait till everybody's here and.
I agree.
Talk about it then. So I make a motion to postpone the.
Yeah.
Postpone the county purchases over 5,000 to the next meeting.
Second.
Motion second. We have any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Okay, personnel.
Tony, you want to go over this or you want us to just go with it? I make a motion as written on, uh.
If I may, can we?
I was going to read them.
Okay, yeah.
For Willard Wright, substitute teacher Gilmer County Schools, for Carol Miles as substitute cook for Gilmer County Schools and substitute aide for Gilmer County Schools in the extracurricular, the resignation of elementary basketball, second and third grade, Megan McKnight. The, for Danny Smith to replace that second grade basketball, the second and third grade basketball. Daniel Page as middle school wrestling coach, Crystal Conrad, after-school tutor at Gilmer County High School, and Jacob Yocum, registered after-school tutor, his resignation for after-school tutor. Make a motion that we, um, what would that be? Accept resignations and applications for those positions.
Do we need to do them individually? Do you need to recuse yourself?
I do.
Okay, so let's, let's do, I make a motion to.
That's what I was trying to say.
Uh, you got one?
I make a motion to approve Willard Wright for substitute teacher at Gilmer County Schools.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All those opposed? Motion carries.
I make a motion to, uh, what, how did you word that?
I think you have to recuse yourself from that one, which means leave the room while we vote on the Miles. Is that correct?
Oh, do I have to leave?
Yeah, it's to recuse, you have to leave. Then someone else will have to make a motion. Yeah.
Okay.
So you go out and we'll make the motion.
I'll tell you what, you make it and I'll second it.
I got you.
Okay, Dr. Miller, who was being recused?
Uh, Jason Barr. I think it's his mother-in-law.
Okay, thank you.
So I make a motion that we approve Carol Miles as substitute cook and substitute aide for Gilmer County Schools.
I will second that. And since.
All, all in favor?
Yeah. Aye.
All right.
Aye.
With Jason Barr recusing.
Jason Barr recusing. Nays, if any? Discussion? Motion passed. He says too late.
Okay, come back.
I didn't pass it yet until I said it.
So I make a motion that we approve the extracurricular portion of the personnel list for the November 14th regular meeting.
Second.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Let's see. Discussion of staff incentives.
So it's been brought to my attention in years past that there's been a couple of different types of incentives. The first one would be for board office employees that were employed for over 230 days at the district level to be able to have that Friday after Thanksgiving off and, and be, and be able to not, not work that day as a, as a staff incentive. And it's been completed in the past that those, those employees that are 230 day and above at, at, at the board office level have received that. The second incentive would be for all Gilmer County teachers and at the, at the, at both schools on the 22nd of December to have that day off as long as they complete all of their snow day packets, which would take time and so on. That day is a professional learning day for all employees and they would receive those days off as a staff incentive for having their work completed on that 22nd day. So those are some of the things that, that I was going to continue to recommend that have been practiced in the past. That would be a good incentive for our folks to, that put the extra time and effort into it and have that stuff completed before they actually go and break.
22nd is on Thursday.
Yeah, I just have, and I don't know the specifics. I know there's like two 30-day people and two 40-day people or something. Are we treating those people equally? That's the only thing I.
The 230 day and above is what I'm making a recommendation for. And that's, that's pretty much the people that work here.
Okay, okay. I just wanted to, so I, I make a motion that we follow the superintendent's recommendation on staff incentives.
Second.
Yeah, they, um, the, it's, the recommendation was made to me by, by folks within the district to, to offer these incentives. That it was a talk, that, that it was ongoing. Patty was in these talks beforehand.
So we have a motion and a second.
Clint has the discussion.
I have a discussion I want to add. Um, in the, in the past, that has been 230 and above county-wide, not just at the board office. Like your principals.
Yes.
They give that to, not just board office.
And I'm making the recommendation 230 and above.
Okay.
Well, I, I just knew that like Connor was different and some of the IT people were different, but I don't know the numbers.
You made a motion now already?
Yeah.
I'll second that.
Okay.
Cody's got it.
Got a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All right, we have, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Discussion of vacant board seat, we can move on, right?
Yeah.
Would you like to introduce yourself while you're, while we're discussing this?
Hi, my name is Dustin Freshour. I am.
I am originally from Gilmer County. We, my wife and I recently have moved back. We have two small boys. One is three, one is one. And, uh, I am a internal auditor for MVB Bank. I, uh, am a CPA. I worked public, uh, before working for the bank. I went to the college here at Limbo State, so, um, I'm happy to be, be here.
Good to have you. Uh, let's see, superintendent's information. Any?
I just, first, this is my first regular meeting. I want to say thank you to all you guys that, uh, put your trust in me and, uh, I want to, I want to welcome our new board member. Freshour appreciates you stepping up and, and, uh, working with our board. Um, I've got just a very few things to go over. One is the county approval, approval status and accreditation. On November 9th, um, the state board met and I received a draft letter from David Roach, state superintendent of schools before that. And it discusses, it's a memorandum that discusses, um, our, our accreditation and our accountability for, uh, the West Virginia system of support and accountability. It deals with policy 2322 and it basically says that I want you to be aware of that the district is on watch in several categories. And I want you to be aware that this information's out to the public, but we're on watch for math achievement and attendance and on track to graduate currently. We are also in the needs assistant category and operational effectiveness for transportation. And we're going to be working over the, the, the next few months and trying to rectify these issues. And I've contacted Matt Hicks at the State Department to come in to give us a training on these success indicators, what exactly the criteria is and how we're going to, uh, get everybody on board to meet those exact success indicators. And he said he would, we, we're going to go back and forth. I hope that you guys can be included or at least a representative can be included so we all know exactly what the indicators are on that balance scorecard so we can reach that and meet all of our accreditation status. I wanted to go over that because that just, that recently came out. Uh, Mr. Hicks told me tomorrow, this, this is a draft, that we will probably actually receive the final copy, which I'll be able to disperse to you guys.
Thank you. Uh, board member comments?
Just like to welcome our newest member.
Yes.
May the Lord have mercy on your soul.
Do you have anything, Cody?
Uh, yeah, I just wanted to welcome Dustin to the board and, uh, thank Dr. Many for the work that he's done, you know, since, um, he started his term. I think things are looking great and it will continue to work, um, from there.
Yes, I'm very pleased with the direction we're taking.
Me too. Motion to our Jordan.
Motion.
You have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
It is. This is the shortest meeting I've ever been to.